Carrie Ward will go second. And the last one, the goal. This is, she will go third. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Can we please stand for the flag of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion to adopt this evening's agenda. Dan. Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We already came back from executive session. Okay. I need a motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting. Kathy. Danny. Any questions, Karen? All in favor?
Aye.
That's Carrie. Moving on to the personnel section of the consent agenda, I need a motion.
Someone.
Jason.
Danny.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The remainder of the consent agenda. I need a motion.
Someone.
Kathy.
Second.
Jason. Any questions? We have the tragic reports, the internal audit, and the CSC. Any question? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That's Carrie. I'll save my report for next time we had a president's vice president's meeting. I've been at Bosie's last week. So about the next time. But let's move on to, I know we have some students here tonight, so we will. Somebody's eager. So are we to hear from you, so I will turn it over to you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Civic. So we have our, some of our students from AES here tonight along with three of our teachers, and they're going to kind of take you through a pretty exciting event that they had a week, a little over a week ago, right?
Right before break.
Right before break called Battle of the Bands. And it's unbelievable if you've never, never witnessed it before. It's, hey, I'm just jealous because I wish I could play some of those things. Maybe I can get in next year.
Absolutely.
Alright, so my name is Amanda Schumaker, and I teach general music in chorus at Appalachian Elementary School.
My name is Ryan Service. I've been teaching the district for 15 years, and I teach band and music in middle school, high school. I teach band at AES.
And I'm Katie St. John. I teach fifth grade at AES.
So we're really excited tonight to talk to you about Battle of the Bands. And we want to tell you a little bit about how it came to be, the process, and we have some students and one of our fifth grade teachers here. So let's just kind of start with where it came from. So last year was a difficult year. A lot of things were, were, it was just different. It was different than normal years. And we were looking for something to get the students excited, and we couldn't do a lot of performing. So we were kind of brainstorming of how we could get our students to do a performance safely. And so we came up with this idea of Battle of the Bands, and we collaborated on this. And we kind of took a negative situation and tried to turn it into a more of an opportunity to try something new with the students. And Mr. Service was at AES every day, so we also took advantage of that. And we really co-topped this whole unit Battle of the Bands.
Yeah. And I think last year was a pretty great success, even though it was new and seemed overwhelming when we first planned it. This year, having the experience we had last year, we knew that we wanted to do something that would, you know, just continue it and evolve it to what we did right before break. When we get together, our main objective is we want to create something that's memorable for not just the fifth graders, but pretty much the entire school community at AES. But that also involves every fifth grade student, which I think is so huge because literally every fifth grade student at AES touched the performance in one way or another. So what we do is we start by, in music class, Mrs. Schumaker's music class, she kind of lays out the unit the first day. And in that, we talk about some of the jobs and the roles that the students will have during the performance or while we learn. And the next few days after that, we begin to delegate the task. What was unique about this year was that we challenged each class to create a song, to write and create a song. And I think that's one part I skipped, is that each class in AES has turned into a band.
Yes. So the process is, we introduce the unit. Students have a lot of choice and ownership during this unit, so they fill out a Google form and they get to choose what job they're interested in. So we could go to the next slide, you'll see the different jobs are available. So marketing has to do with designing the logo. So that, some of the kids are wearing the shirt. They actually designed this logo and they got to pick what it looked like. And their name, what's your name? The record spinners was this class's name. So some of the kids had a bigger job of trying to decide what the logo would look like, the colors of the t-shirts, how that was going to work. Students also made posters and flyers. Our whole auditorium was decorated with posters. They went around the whole school and they posted things about how Battle of the Bands is coming soon, be ready, it's coming in April. So marketing is a big job. Sound director. These students were in charge of running the sound during the performance, so they literally had an iPad. And like, it was very hands-off for us, so they were the ones in charge of like adjusting the mics, adjusting the instruments. They can move around the auditorium. One of our students also kind of recorded the performance as well. The performers were the kids playing the instruments. And I'll let Mr. Service talk a little bit more about this.
Performers. It's, first of all, if any student wants to perform in the song, we try to find a way to accommodate them so that they can be part of the performance. Many of the students, the instruments that they played, they learned in the two months leading up to Battle of the Bands performance because we begin this in January and it culminates to the performance in April. So a lot of the students that performed had never ever played or had a formal lesson on those instruments, but they did a great job. Yeah. Say, yeah, sorry. They performed.
The stage manager. A bunch of kids kind of did this job. They just decided how the stage would be set up. And then we had lighting. So again, very hands-off. The students had a controller and they got, we borrowed lights from the high school, middle school, and they got to control like the colors of the lights. We had black lights going on. Do you want to talk anymore about the light?
Yeah. So prior to the lights arriving at AES, we tried to plant the bug up. Think of like what colors you'd want to have during certain sections of the songs and create the mood and the ambiance. I think they did a really great job. Kail, you did a great job doing that for your class. So yeah.
So lots of skills were developed during this unit. Not just music skills, but skills that kind of went into other subject areas as well. So our music standards are perform, create, connect, and respond, and we definitely utilized all of those. We used 21st century learning skills, collaboration, communication, creativity, use of technology. Because the students wrote their own song, we did utilize some ELA standards and skills. We talked a lot about vocabulary, the different words they could use, the different choices, technology and audio skills.
Yeah. What I think was really unique about all of this is the way that each class decided to write and write their songs. Miss St. John's class used their iPads and they literally wrote some loops on GarageBand. They came to Mrs. Schumaker and I with these loops. Mrs. Schumaker helped them translate the loops into how can we perform this using the instruments at school? And it worked out great. Other classes came in with just lyrics. And we helped them kind of create a melody and some chords that would be easy to learn on the guitar and easy to play on the piano and easy to play on the bass to go with it. I think that worked out great. In other classes, there's one class where when they came in during recess to show me the lyrics they had, they actually had the chords and everything to go with it prior to coming in. So it was just me listening to what they were doing. It was really, really awesome. I think what's really great about this too is that it kind of shows students that there's professions in the music industry that don't involve performing. And we really try to highlight those. Mrs. Schumaker does a great job making those connections in music class, showing them, you know, you can go on tour, you can do lights for a band, or you can do lights for a venue, sound. And just watching the students walk around with the rehearsals prior to the performance and just taking trips around the auditorium to make sure everything was balanced was pretty, pretty sweet.
And then student success and wellness. So because each class wrote a song, we really kind of got a picture of what fifth graders are thinking about. And three of the classes, of course, were about COVID. That's a big thing that they're thinking about right now, as are all of us. But we really got to see other things like their ideas about the songs. They got to process like their emotions and feelings about COVID through the songs. And then one class wrote just about like their experience as a fifth grader and about their class, a lot of inside jokes about the class. So it was really interesting and it was really cool for us to just be able to listen to what's going through their heads or what they're, what they're thinking about. So that tied in as well. So for collaboration, so Ryan and I, I'm mostly in charge of general music in chorus, and he does bands and modern bands. And we really collaborated. We co-topped this whole thing together. So there was a lot of collaboration going on there. The students collaborated together to, as a team, to make this happen. And then we also collaborate a lot with the fifth grade team. They're very flexible, very helpful. They hold a lot of these activities into their classrooms as well. And Mrs. St. John's going to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, you think with an activity like this that it's really just mainly about music, but we saw it translate into the classroom as well. I think that I personally saw in my classroom an increase in confidence across all of the students. There was more classroom participation. The cooperative learning was going smoother because they had this experience of working closely together to reach a common goal in problem solving. And that really was noticeably better in the classroom as well, in my academic setting. So it wasn't just something that was just isolated to their music time. It really benefited them during instructional and academic time as well.
Yes, it's, it's pretty amazing to watch a class of close to 20 students make decisions that all funnel into one performance. So that's a lot of ideas that they got to sift through to end up with the final result. And they do a great job doing it and doing it so that people's feelings are not hurt.
Yeah.
With the technology piece, it was, we have some ideas to better include STEM as we move forward and carry it onto AES. Mr. McAvoy was huge as far as creating a video that came out really, really great, so thank you very much. Yeah.
So for special areas, we, when we do this unit, it really does include STEAM because the students are using so much technology and we're hoping to further this in the future. Also, the art aspect, as they made tons of posters, they posted things, they're designing things. So we're including other subject areas in the special areas as well. And then district-wide, we'll talk about this a little bit in the next slide, but we're hoping that this will spread so we can collaborate with other people within other buildings in the district. So we started this last year and it was a lot of fun. We made a lot of changes this year to make it better. We're hoping that this continues in the future. A lot of our bands got fan mail from the other classes. We had a little merch table as well, so we like had extra t-shirts we gave out. So we're, we were trying to get the other kids excited about this for when they're in fifth grade. And I think these, these guys probably remember Battle of the Bands from last year when they were in fourth grade. So we're hoping to establish this tradition and keep it going every year. And again, we're hoping also to make it a district-wide.
Yeah, yeah, I have a second grade daughter that was really excited about this. And the discussions, listening to her and her classmates talk about which band they liked the best, it was a lot of fun too. But I talked, actually I just ran into Mr. Staples and Mrs. Merges today, and we were talking about Battle of the Bands. That's something that OES is interested in starting, which I think would be great to have one night where the entire fifth grade of both buildings gets together and does this. Because I think there's a lot of benefit to, to this unit. I think it's, it's really great. It's cutting edge, it's 21st century music making, checks all those boxes. One idea that we had for the future is in addition to the students writing and performing their own song, we thought it'd be neat if they made their own videos to go with it as well, using their iPads and some of the software that we have access to. At the district, would that be a good idea?
Yeah.
Your check is in the mail. We were talking about further collaboration with other departments within the district. I think this is also be something that would be something we could sell to other districts as well, not just within ours. That would be great, which is why we're planning on taking this and presenting it to NISMIA Winter Conference in Rochester in 2022, which I think would be great. And then, of course.
Students and giving them ownership of something and just giving them a sense of pride and working towards something for so long and then putting it on as a class together. So that's really the thing that I think we're most happy about or we get excited about is that the kids have such independence during this project.
Yeah. The day of the performance, we literally just introduced it and then watched. And they, the students handled the rest of it, so it was really great.
And we have, we have a clip of the record spinners performing their song called "The Other Side." I believe it's on the next slide.
It is, but it's not. Can you play this? Do you have it? Can you add that? When I say this is a PDF to add, I lose the embedded part.
Gotcha, okay.
So I can send it out. Do you, do you have it?
Do we want to have some students talk while we pull that up?
Yeah.
Okay. It is on YouTube.
Yeah, let me sit here.
I think we just wanted to start about the 16-minute mark or around with St., Mrs. St. John's class. So do any of you want to share about something you learned from this project? Or maybe what you got most excited about, or your favorite part, Tobin?
So I kind of learned to be less nervous going out in front of people and performing, and I learned to get better with the instrument that I knew how to play.
Want to share anything, Kail?
He's a true bass player, he's a true bassist.
Any, any other of you want to share?
How about if he just tells us what he did in the band? Can we do that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I played the bass guitar. Yeah.
Kail, do you mind telling, explain what you did?
I did lights.
Nice. Can I ask, Kail, when you were doing lights for this song, like what were some of the things you were thinking about?
Like kind of making like the lights going with, kind of like with, you know, like with the performers and that stuff.
Yeah. Hayden?
Not much, I just feel like it inspired some creativity in the history of the margins.
What about Eliana?
It was amazing to work together as a class, and I really enjoyed making this song in the past days.
Yeah.
Right. Can you, is this where it?
It's right after, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So this is the record spinner, it's going to be their song.
Hang on. I get my mouth, I do not have my mouth, I need to just keep it.
Hey, yourself, it's me, yeah, it's me. We are the record spinners. And we have Alicia on the baritone, Braden on the bass guitar, Billy Alexis, Caleb on the lights, Lily on the flute, Hayden on the drum set, Jayden on the piano, Peyton on the drums, Grayson on the xylophone, and me on the saxophone.
Yeah. Nice.
Give one more round of applause for all the classes.
I sung that song, I'll break. It's in my head.
I was gonna say, all of your songs repeated in your head.
Yeah, yeah, they're catchy though. Like the students write really good hooks.
They did, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, good job, man, that was good, good job.
Do you have any questions for our students? Or us?
I have to comment, I'm very impressed, especially with that, was that a rapping episode?
It was.
Very, very well done. Very well done.
Yeah, that, that evolved too, like he, he really refined that, yeah.
And it was amazing to see like the kids would, they have like little chat, what are they called? Chat rooms, Google chat rooms. And they would like message us, oh, what day do we have music? When do we need to bring our instruments? And here's some ideas for lyrics. And they were working on it all the time. And it was just cool to hear that they were working on it so much outside of the music classroom.
Yeah, they owned it, they did a great job.
Pretty good.
Great.
Thank you, boys and girls.
Oh, you said you learned how to not be less nervous. How did you do that?
I don't know.
You had to share that.
Did a good job of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You certainly did. Well, thank you so much, guys. This is the, I think I can speak with boards. One of our favorite things is when you guys show up and show us what you can do, and you really did, so thank you so much. That was very, very good as far as I can see.
Yeah, the line was like, life's hope junior or something.
I was gonna say, you're gonna get staff to join today, or you can get the board to join today.
No.
That would be awesome.
I think they're retiring all of the students.
I'm off.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. Thanks for showing us. Thank you.
Get home before those roast.
Yeah.
Yeah, might as well.
That's right. Yeah, my stuff left on the legs for sure.
Okay, so this is the budget presentation that you've seen now three different times. This will be the fourth, I believe. The really only change to discuss at this point is we received an increase in state aid from the final budget approval for New York State. So that increase is about $94,000. So we're going to allocate those funds towards the addition of the positions that we talked about, a social worker, a school psychologist, and a school counselor. So enhancing our student support services will, will be part of that, that process. But ultimately, the numbers are very similar. There's a $94,000 change on the, on the revenue on the expense side. It's, it's pretty straightforward. Any questions? Anybody?
This is gonna seem off-topic, and you're probably the only one that understands what I'm about to say, but is what Frank said, is that true? Exchar, the one that I sent you.
Is it true?
What he had said?
Yes. Yes.
So definitely those positions that we're adding.
We have some significant needs, for sure.
No, I just don't, Fred Exchar went and said to the Senate and basically told everyone who's upset being hypocrites that there's a large mental health issue and talked about Julia and the fact that we get kids waiting lists for months before they go see. So, and the social worker and the psychologist is important for the kids.
Absolutely. Thanks again.
Is that's it? Yeah, that's really it. Nothing else has changed? Yes. Okay. All the same information that you said.
All right. I guess that concludes what you have in front of you.
Yep.
We have some district business. So we, we have to approve the budget now at this point, correct? So. We need a motion to approve the budget as opposed?
Seven, second.
Jason. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That's Carrie. Okay, we have the, the bus proposition that's going to be on the ballot as well. Any motion?
Someone.
Kathy? Dan? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Property tax report card. Again, this is another document we have to file, state. And it goes out to everybody. Any motion?
Someone.
Jason, Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
This is the Bosie's budget and the Bosie's Board of Education numbers. Any motion? Kathy, Dan? Any questions under this, under this Bosie's? Okay, all in favor? Aye. That's Carrie.
We have to nominate the results for the numbers also due.
Wait, do we need individually? I thought there was only three for three seats.
There's three, so we're.
Oh, there's three for three seats.
Correct, so just, we're good with all of them?
Oh, let's take a look. I, I looked at it earlier. Sandy's still the president of the board. Phil Powell is the entire Bosie's, but he's, he's the controller up there. Amnis Patias. Any issues? Alright, so I guess we're okay with all three of them. Alright, so moving back. Place again.
Need a motion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we need a motion. Steve and Danny? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay. Final request for services for BOSI's, any motion?
Some.
Kathy?
Senator?
Jason? You know, it's a really long document. Anybody have any questions? The services are in my heart. Probably will last, from what I saw. Yep. Okay. So I need a motion. There you go. Dan?
Kathy.
Kathy, all in favor? All right, we have three policies here that are first read. There's sections, I guess we have. Three sections. There are first reads. The community relations, any motion? Do we have to bring the motion out just for first read? All right, we'll have to come back to those after the second. Next meeting. Okay. So that's district business.
Marcy, what are the chances you can email those to us?
I can, yes.
Because I'm gonna totally predict to go back.
I've been trying to run a zip drive. Thank you, so sorry.
Okay. Moving on, I don't have anyone that signed up for public comments. So I guess we won't put anything on there. Mr. Beatty? Anything you'd like to share?
We're just gearing up for state testing next week. We have an ambitious May and June, lots of field trips and learning outside of the classroom coming up. Events. I really want to say publicly, thank you to the Transportation Department, Tony Carano. We're going a lot of different places. And I know he's pitched for, for workers and he's never said no. He may have said, can you start a half an hour earlier or later, but he's really worked with us and tried to get us everything that they've asked for, so I want to publicly say thank you to him. And that's about it.
Ken, back there.
Good evening, everyone. State test also in the middle school next week in math. We should be ready for those. We did have before break, John Heath took a group of students up to the SUNY Brewing Robotics Championship and they won it. A lot of individual medal winners also came out of it, but they were always the winning team. And John's putting together a presentation hopefully for the next board meeting so that he can come and bring the kids in and kind of tell you a little bit about it and how well they did. And Career Center, Center Furniture will be, part of it will be here tomorrow. And we're gonna get that up and running pretty soon.
Thanks, Ken. Right, you got any for us?
Lovely weather, Chris. Really looking forward to the snow coming tonight for baseball. Softball, that's gonna help? No. Two highlights right now in athletics that are just starting up are U5, which is exciting. U5 starts tomorrow. It's always a great thing, you know, in basketball. So we're looking forward to that. And another exciting thing right now, second four, we are part of a pilot program on the NFL and we're starting a girls' flag football team. So there's seven schools. One school had enough to have two teams, but that starts, so they're starting some practices and we're gonna go, I think we have about five games. There's a kickoff event at C V this Saturday. And we are, our area has the New York Giants kind of affiliated with it, so there's potential for a couple Giants players to be there, do some opening scrimmage stuff at the talk, so it's just an exciting thing and some good opportunities for our kids out there.
Wow, I'm gonna guess if you said.
I think there's seven schools.
That sounds true.
In second four.
Really?
We got a little bit late to it, but we are able to make it happen and, and impart it. So it's, it's gonna be a pretty neat experience for the girls to partake.
Great.
Couple home games. I don't know the dates yet off the top of my head, but I'll, I'll let you know.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn. Okay.
Kathy?
All in favor?
Aye.